We will call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, November the 18th, 2024 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let's stand together as our county attorney, Mr. Eric Grady, will lead us in prayer, and then I ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Father God in heaven, we pray to you today on behalf of our county commissioners and for the citizens they represent, we pray that you grant them a spirit of wisdom, insight, and cooperation. We pray that you help them to serve this county in its best interest. We pray that we learn to love one another as citizens so that we might have peace and justice tempered with mercy. Thank you for the freedom that we have in this nation and in this county. We thank you for those who defend our country and our freedom. We thank you for the protection and provision you have placed over us as your blessings. May your will be done as we seek to follow your example in humble imitation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome each of you here this morning to the Board of Commissioners meeting, which is your meeting, and to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you also. I would ask for those that are in attendance today, if we would make sure our cell phones are silent so they would not disrupt the meeting, we would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda packets. One item I would like to just add would be Chairman's privilege behind the approval of the agenda. Are there any you want to?
I can make a motion to do the agenda as is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Ladies and gentlemen, this morning as we get started, and Commissioners, I would like to take Chairman's privilege, and so if you would give me a few minutes, I would appreciate it. I would like to take this opportunity to update our citizens on recent events surrounding the relationship between Craven County and Carolina East Health System. I am pleased to inform our citizens that the county and the hospital have finalized and signed a new lease for the hospital campus. As a matter of history, for several decades prior to 1988, the hospital, which is owned by the citizens of Craven County, was operated by Craven County. It was during these many decades that the taxpayers of this community provided the funds necessary to build and develop much of the hospital campus that is used by Carolina East today. In 1988, Craven County created, under North Carolina law, a hospital authority that is now known as the Carolina East Health System. The hospital authority was created to provide a more modern management structure for what had been known as the Craven County Hospital. The county leased the then-existent, modern, 300-plus-bed hospital to the authority for $1 per year. Craven County and its taxpayers also agreed that the county would commit any funds it derived from its hospital property to bond payments owed by the hospital authority should the hospital fail. Thankfully, that did not happen. That lease was set to expire in October of this year. Thankfully, in addition to all of this, in the early 1990s, the county began paying debt the hospital incurred through a bond issue. The citizens of Craven County essentially gave a modern, fully-functioning hospital to the hospital authority and took the further step of paying the hospital's debt for some years. The citizens of Craven County entrusted their hospital and their healthcare to this new hospital authority with the expectation that the hospital would always serve the interest of all citizens of Craven County and surrounding areas. Over the years, the hospital fulfilled its obligations to the citizens of Craven County by not only providing excellent healthcare but also by providing various forms of community support. The hospital has financially supported various nonprofit organizations which address public health and similar health-related issues. The hospital has also been actively in financing and financially supporting community economic development efforts, MCAS Cherry Point and our military community. According to information provided by the hospital to the county over the summer, the value of this community's support is around $1 million per year. I know I speak for my colleagues on this Board of Commissioners and all the citizens of Craven County in expressing gratitude for the hospital's efforts to support various causes important to our community. Importantly, the hospital for many years has also provided EMS service to the city of New Bern and adjacent areas at no cost to Craven County. The county greatly appreciates this service as without it, the county would be required by law to provide EMS service at great expense to the county's taxpayers. A new lease has been signed, and it can last up to 20 years, thereby securing the hospital's current operations and its very important role in our community for quite some time. The lease also provides for a payment from the hospital to the county of $450,000 per year. This amount was settled upon after extensive negotiations between the county and the hospital and represents a very small amount when compared to the fair market rental value that the county could get for the property, which would cost the hospital millions of dollars per year if the county was not willing to take such a substantial discount. Furthermore, the use of the amounts paid by the hospital to the county is restricted to public health and mental health, substance abuse treatment purposes, and to offset the county's costs associated with medical services provided to inmates in Craven County Jail. Although any amount paid by the hospital to the county would ultimately benefit the citizens of Craven County and therefore the hospital indirectly, the support of mental health and substance abuse treatment services in particular will directly benefit the hospital as increased and better care for these conditions will divert those in crises from the hospital's ER, which is oftentimes the most expensive medical care and is frequently medical care for which the hospital is never paid due to circumstances of those in these crises. Perhaps most importantly, the hospital has graciously agreed in the new lease to continue providing EMS services to the city of New Bern and adjacent areas. This is a wonderful and meaningful contribution by the hospital to the well-being of many of our citizens. Again, the county is deeply appreciative of the hospital's agreement to keep its EMS services in place for the foreseeable future. It is also important to make clear that the hospital's obligations under the new lease represent in many ways the formalization of various benefits the hospital has provided over the years. For instance, the hospital has in some years provided $100,000 to the county to assist the county in providing mental health and substance abuse treatment services. Likewise, for many years, the hospital has provided assistance to the county to offset the county's cost of medical care required by law to be provided by the county to jail inmates. The hospital has also provided over the years funding to support the county's public health work. Finally, the hospital has provided EMS services for decades. From the county's perspective, formalizing some of the hospital's historical contributions to the county and its citizens will confirm the formal relationship of the parties and remove uncertainty and possibility for conflict in the future, particularly between future boards and future management teams. The public should not consider, I'll say that again, the public should not consider, the financial consideration required under the new lease to be a completely new obligation of the hospital, rather, that consideration represents the formalization in part of many financial benefits the hospital has provided for many years. The new lease has also allowed the hospital to avoid a potential financial disaster. And we'll say that again, the new lease has also allowed the hospital to avoid a potential financial disaster. In 2022, the hospital borrowed $52 million through the issuance of a bond, which essentially constitutes a loan by a bank to the hospital. The condition of this bond was that the hospital provide the lender a new lease with the county or a lease extension no later than December 31st, 2023, December 31st, 2023. Otherwise, the lender would be able to demand immediate repayment of the bond amount in full. For some reason unknown to this Board of Commissioners, that deadline passed without any effort by the hospital to get a new lease in place. In fact, the county commissioners did not know about the critical need for a new lease until September of this year, just before the expiration of the old lease. It was only in September that the hospital informed the county that the hospital was technically in violation of its bond terms, and a new lease was absolutely and immediately necessary to avoid repaying the loan balance of $50 million. As communicated by one hospital representative, the unplanned repayment of $50 million by the hospital would have resulted in significant cuts to medical services rendered to the citizens of Craven County. Fortunately, this Board of Commissioners, your county commissioners, worked with the hospital to extend the old lease several times in order to give the parties time to negotiate a new lease. Craven County was pleased to assist the hospital in resolving a potential financial default under the hospital's 2022 loan so that existing healthcare services provided by the hospital could be maintained. Unfortunately, and despite the county's effort over the past several months to negotiate a new lease that meets the needs of the county, its citizens, and the hospital, Craven County has been informed that some at the hospital may intend to use the terms of the new lease as an opportunity to stop or limit the hospital's support for the many community and charitable organizations the hospital has supported for many, many years. Apparently, it appears this action is intended to be indirect punishment of the county for the terms of the new lease, rather than use the new lease as an opportunity to renew and improve the relationship between the county and the hospital. Apparently, some at the hospital desire to live in the past, attempting to resurrect disputes, perceive slights and disagreements which should be put into history. If true, the hospital's removal or reduction of its $1 million contribution annually that supports this county and others will have devastating consequences for those organizations supporting public health, indigent care, MCAS Cherry Point, and our military community. For financial statements provided by the hospital to the county for the hospital's most recent physical year, the hospital received $1.7 billion in revenue from its operations. After expenses, the hospital made $46.5 million in profit during the same period. Moreover, as of June 30th, 2024, the hospital's audit shows that the hospital has cash and investments on hand of $418 million. I ask the clerk of our board to enter into the minutes of this meeting the hospital's most recent audit and the financial statements of the hospital, both of which support my statements on the hospital's financial condition. As we can all see, the hospital's financial support of various community organizations and causes, although important and greatly appreciated, represents a very small fraction of the hospital's revenues, profit, and cash investments on hand. Based upon the hospital's own financial statements and audit, there appears to be no legitimate financial reason for the hospital to punish community organizations in order to send some sort of message to this Board of Commissioners. Despite the success between the county and the hospital in arriving at fair terms under the new lease, the potential financial crises created by the inaction of the hospital's leadership cannot be repeated. Similarly, the risk to our community organizations posed by a full or partial defunding of the hospital's financial support cannot go unaddressed. Accordingly, I call upon the hospital board to convene in special or emergency session and provide this Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Craven County no later than 5:00 PM this Thursday, November 21st, 2024, a plan for investigating the eternal infairs that put the hospital at risk of being in default on a $50 million debt. During that meeting, I also asked the hospital board to state whether the hospital intends to decrease or eliminate funding for the community causes and organizations that I have mentioned this morning. If the hospital in fact intends to decrease or eliminate funding for these various community organizations, I further ask that the hospital identify the organizations or causes which will be impacted by name and by amount. If the hospital board declines to take these actions as requested, I believe each and every hospital board member is very likely engaging in breach of duty and inefficiency and quite possibly misconduct in office. Although I want the hospital board to address the matters I have identified this morning, those issues are of the utmost concern and importance to the citizens of this county. If the hospital does not take immediate and meaningful action to address them, I will consider using as chairman of this Board of Commissioners every and each authority at my disposal to address these issues. The citizens of Craven County must be assured that the management of the hospital is not neglecting its duties to efficiently or appropriately monitor and attend to the business of the hospital so that the institution is never again put at risk of a potential loan default of the magnitude at issue recently. Craven County and its citizens must be assured that the original decision to entrust the hospital, the people's hospital, the citizens of Craven County's hospital, and the region's healthcare and a hospital authority remains the right decision. Likewise, I am disappointed for the citizens of Craven County and those organizations and efforts the hospital has historically supported, that some at the hospital may choose to engage in petty politics and vindictiveness over a lease that was mutually agreed to by the hospital and by the county after extensive negotiations. I do not believe anyone would knowingly choose to defund military support, public health support, indigent healthcare, mental health, or substance abuse care, particularly when there is no legitimate financial or other reason to do so. At the end of the day, the hospital and the county serve the citizens of Craven County. To disadvantage those heroic groups serving our military community and serving those in our community in need is in direct conflict with what should be our mutual goal of making the lives of the citizens of Craven County better and closing. I would like to make clear that Craven County is very proud, very proud, even though it was put out otherwise, very proud of the healthcare provided to our citizens through the original Craven County Hospital, the people's hospital, which then became Craven Regional Medical Center, which still remains the people's hospital, which is now known today as Carolina East Medical Center, which is still the people of Craven County's hospital. The hospital has always played an important role in improving the lives of our citizens, and Craven County looks forward to continuing this tradition. However, certain recent events must be addressed by the hospital's current board so that the hospital and its citizens can be assured that the hospital's affairs are being handled with the utmost competence and focus on the need of our citizens. To the employees of the hospital, I express my gratitude for the jobs that you do. Many of you sit here today, and there are many that are still at the hospital working. I thank you. The hospital employs many wonderful, kind, and skilled employees, many of whom put the best interest of their patients and community before their own. Craven County, this Board of Commissioners sees your daily efforts, and we appreciate them. Rest assured that Craven County supports you unconditionally, and Craven County would do anything within its power to make sure you have the support and tools you need to continue providing the excellent healthcare you have provided for many, many years.
I'd like a motion that we support as commissioners. We support the statement that was just read, and it be entered into the minutes.
You heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, that the remarks, the statement that I have just spoke, be entered into the official minutes of the Craven County Board of Commissioners with the motion as second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The next item I'd like to ask, I'd like, no sir, you may not. Commissioners, I would also like to ask that this board, you're out of order, sir. You can come back. You're welcome. Any citizen is welcome to come back to this Board of Commissioners at our next meeting. That's when public comment is. I'll be glad to talk to you when we recess, but this is, we do not entertain comments at this time. The next, I would like to say, do I have a motion that this statement be hand-delivered to the hospital by noon today, addressed to the president of the hospital and to the chairman of the board?
A motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Again, we thank each of you for being here today. I've watched some say it states in our bylaws that you can speak at the first meeting of the month at night. That's citizen comment. Any citizen in this county is welcome. We want to hear from you. We invite you to come back, speak your mind. That's what we're here to listen to. But today is not a time for the citizens of the county. It's not part of our bylaws, and if we were to breach those today, then we would set precedent. So no, sir, I will not accept any comments at this time. Again, thank you for your attendance. We would want to continue our meeting. I would give anyone that would like to leave at this time, you're welcome to stay. Anybody that would like to leave, we'll give you the opportunity to do so. If not, we're going to proceed forward with our meeting. Commissioner's staff, are you ready to begin with item one?
Yes, sir.
We're honored today to have with us Mr. Stacy Lee, the Chief Financial, Chief Officer of Systems and Operations.
Don't add another one.
Yeah. He's here today to discuss the Craven County Board of Education question. Good morning, Mr. Lee.
Good morning. And thank you for having me this morning. In October this year, the Board of Education declared the old Bridgestone Elementary property as surplus with the intent to sell it at fair market value. The property has been appraised, and there's two parcels. There's one closer to the water, then there's one across the street. The parcel closest to the water appraised for $500,000, the other smaller parcel appraised for $70,000. And our intent is to try to sell that at fair market value. So by statute, we have to offer it to the Board of Commissioners first for you to either enter into buying the property or denying your opportunity to buy it. So that's why I'm here today. Happy to answer any questions.
I would like to make a motion that we deny buying this and then put it out for bid to somebody else.
Okay, you heard the motion. We have a motion. It's the second's a motion to deny the purchase opportunity. Is any further discussion by the Board of Commissioners? Here none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And if I could ask one favor, I need a letter from Mr. Blake saying that you guys denied it just for our records.
Yes, sir. Stacy, we appreciate what you do, and we thank you for being here today.
Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Item two, we have a presentation this morning from the executive director of Hope Mission. Yes, good morning, sir. Pastor Gene, come right on. Sorry we had to take care of a little other business before you got here this morning, but we appreciate you being in attendance today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Hope Mission of Coastal Carolina, we are delighted to address the citizens of Craven County through our substance use jail diversion programs that we've been running in the jail for the last four years, and just the great job that the sheriff's office takes care in providing us to be in the jail on a weekly basis. I'm going to have John Sotarkis, who is our Recovery Services Director, who oversees and runs all of our substance uses comes up, he'll have a report to give to you. And again, we're just here to say thank you for the privilege of serving Craven County and being able to address those with mental health and substance use issues.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Lee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would I be able to approach, provide everyone with a presentation?
Most time, we just actually give it to the clerk, and we'll get it later. Thank you.
For those who are not familiar with Hope Mission and the processes and programs, we are a faith-based residential recovery program. We are currently peer support-led. Peer supports are those who have been in long-term recovery, and they are certified through the state, and they live within our homes. We currently have 10 residential treatment and transitional homes that spread from Havelock to Morehead City. And within our six-month programming, we offer the peer supports from the day of intake, from their first day to their 181st day. We have peer support specialists that are working with them, walking them through that process of recovery. The six months that they're with us is like a bubble, so they're not, in the first 90 days, they are not working, they're not have access to family, things like that. And during that time, they're able to work with clinical specialists to develop their framework or their foundation of recovery. And we're realizing that within that six months, that is so crucial to develop a redefining of that individual's mental health to include substance use treatment. So we have mental health providers that work with us in partnership during that 180 days that they're with us. It really is such a short time for us to invest, so we realize that that's the most bang for the buck is during that 180 days where we can really invest and develop into these people's lives. During those, within the packets, you'll see our regular county report that we provide. Within that, it is a comprehensive report that addresses from that individual's day of intake all the way through to their graduation, what they're doing. We'll offer them education opportunities, employment transition opportunities, housing opportunities, and we work with the sheriff's office to make sure that those places are appropriate. Within our partnerships, we're using community colleges, both the Craven, Pamlico, and Carteret Reentry Council, and we're working together to provide a rounded opportunity for that individual to have success in their long-term recovery. We realize that for us as individuals, that our recovery is whether mental health or substance use related, I'm a 21-year Marine veteran, and mental health recovery was where I gained a lot of my success and wide strides in. But we know that Jesus is the way every day, and He is what we build our foundation on. And that's where a lot of us have gained wide strides in our recovery. But within our, within our program, we normally average about $35 a night to house an individual for 180 days that they're with us, with our peer supports that are living with them and working with them, transporting them, meeting with them regularly, getting them to their SAIOP or their substance intensive outpatient treatment, along with their mental health treatment. We get them to community support efforts. We'll take them out into the community where they can start to give back to those communities that they suffered in addiction in. So we'll work with them. Currently, we've had 23 clients that have spent a total of 2,261 nights. And again, this is comprehensive from July 1st of 2024, and it'll run until the 31st of June of '25, or excuse me, the 30th of June of '25. But as of right now, we've had a total cost of $79,135 for those 23 individuals. And the cost of housing an inmate in the county jail for the same amount of nights would roughly come out to $158,270. So it's a savings to the county of $79,135. We also know that from 16 of those clients that have come from the jail, five have come from a Craven County contract that we have, five from a COSUP contract, which is the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant Substance Use Program, and then six from the opioid settlement contract, of which two are in their first 90 days, 14 are in their outpatient treatment, along with their mental health treatment. We get them to community support efforts. We'll take them out into the community where they can start to give back to those communities that they suffered in addiction in. So we'll work with them. Currently, we've had 23 clients that have spent a total of 2,261 nights. And again, this is comprehensive from July 1st of 2024 and it'll run until the 31st of June of '25, or excuse me, the 30th of June of '25. But as of right now, we've had a total cost of $79,135 for those 23 individuals. And the cost of housing an inmate in the county jail for the same amount of nights would roughly come out to $158,270. So it's a savings to the county of $79,135. We also know that from 16 of those clients that have come from the jail, five have come from a Craven County contract that we have, five from a COSUP contract with, which is the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant Substance Use Program. And then six from the opioid settlement contract, of which two are in their first 90 days, 14 are in their second 90 days, and four successfully completed the program. Now, when they come through our program, from day one, they'll meet with one of our peer support specialists and they'll go through an intake and we identify the needs of that individual's. If it's Medicaid, if it's GED programming, which we brought into our program. So when an individual comes to us without a GED, they leave with one at minimum. They're also offered housing, clothing. If it's medical support, dental support, eye support, we'll coordinate that and we'll work with a list of comprehensive partners that work within Carteret and Craven County to provide that individual well-rounded care. But we've noticed that through that six months, the longer that we keep them involved, and it doesn't necessarily have to be within the program, if we keep them involved in our transitional housing and we keep them engaged long-term, 12, 18 months, we see a higher success rate. We know that a lot of individuals that go into incarceration, 50% that go in with substance use and mental health issues, we're seeing that 85% come out with mental health and substance use issues. So what we've done is we put peer support specialists in the county jails and they're in there three times a week, working with the Sheriff's Office to make sure that they're getting opportunities for up to six weeks before they, they are engaged enough to come to our program. We have men and women that are going into the jails and meeting with the inmates and working with them, providing them classes and getting them engaged, giving them homework and getting them to a place where they are ready to, to find their recovery. As we know that, you know, if we're not at least meeting that individual halfway, if they don't want it, then, then we run into an issue of successfulness. So we, we engage those individuals to get them to understand what the importance of, of that recovery is. We also have in those packets, we have our board reports. We have two in particular. Within the consolidated recovery systems that we have, we have two distinct programs. One is our Hope Recovery Homes, which is our residential recovery program. And then we have our Peer Recovery Center, which is a recovery hub. And it's, it's home-based in Morehead City, but it covers Carteret, Craven, Pamlico, Jones, Onze, and Beaufort counties as of right now. We have peer support specialists that are actually engaged in all those counties. They are working specifically with those who have not found a source for recovery yet, as well as those who have been through a program and we incorporate them as alumni and we work to keep them engaged long-term. As well, within that packet, you'll have our collaborative partner list. We currently have one, one female and two male transitional houses, which there's no cost for them to stay. And we invite them to come and stay with us long-term, to keep them engaged, bring them back to the Peer Recovery Center, offer classes to those who are within our recovery homes and keep them engaged and involved with what we're doing. We also have, within our Peer Recovery Center, we have various different programming that clients have access to. They are offered the opportunity, again, to go back out into the community and offer those recovery programs that they've learned and that have worked with them. We offer anti-stigma campaigns to raise awareness within eastern North Carolina. We do a program called Recovery on the Road, which three different locations in Craven County that our peer support specialists and alumni are engaged in. They should be, actually, next Wednesday, they'll be down here and they'll start out at RCS. And RCS has welcomed us in to provide recovery programming down there. We do offer, again, we, we are working with the community colleges, both to provide substance use and mental health treatment and engage them in long-term employment. We work with either the Volt Center or the Craven Pamlico Reentry Council. We're working close with them to make sure that if that individual does return to Craven County, that they are engaged and that they have an appropriate plan. We currently, again, we have peers that are not just in the Craven County jails, but they're in two prisons right now, working with individuals that are planning to get released. Our peers that are engaged in the jails and prisons have a, they're called peer navigators while they're in there and they're working with the individuals to plan what their recovery and what their life will look like once they've exited that, that facility. We also offer free trainings, both within, out of the peer building and also within the communities. We offer RAP training, the Wellness Recovery Action Plan. We have facilitators for that. The peer support training, the forensic peer support training, which that is individuals that have been through incarceration can get certified through the state to work with those individuals who are currently incarcerated. We offer continuing ed classes and to date, we facilitated 237 classes to clients. And we've been present in 509 outreach events. Again, we like to bring the clients, as well as the alumni, back into the community. Recently, we completed a project at Whispering Pines Academy. It was a playground project. Jim Trudeau is able to procure the equipment and we brought clients and staff out there over four weekends to build that playground. We've had, up to now, we've had 14 people enrolled and attending in our associates program through the community college. And our intent is, down the road, is to provide more service and bed expansion. But we realize that the longer that those individuals stay with us, the better chance they have at surviving, reuniting with their family. We do graduation the first Thursday of every month at 5:00 PM at our Peer Recovery Center. And I think the best part of being there at that graduation is watching parents reunite with their children and seeing, seeing someone who's gone through a six-month process and come out a completely different person. And with that, are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I would just like to congratulate you on the work that you've done so far and what you continue to do. And I think you're going at the right way of doing it.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Hunt?
I'd make a comment that Hope Mission is an excellent example of how a nonprofit can meet the community's needs in the best way, in a better way than a private source or even the government in most cases. I did attend a graduation this previous week or two weeks ago because I knew there was multiple members from Craven County graduating. And I ran into another young lady who I had met earlier, probably two years ago, who had graduated. She was there with her two daughters, probably six and eight years old, I'm going to guess. And I asked her how she was doing. I do see her around Havelock. I run into her at the grocery store at the VFW, but I hadn't seen her for several months. And I asked her how she was doing. Well, she's working full-time. She's chasing the girls around, making sure that they get their homework done each and every night. I'm just so proud of her. And I want the Commissioners on this board to know that your support for this organizations and other ones like this that provide rehabilitation beds are making a meaningful impact in Craven County. And I would encourage you to continue to do that. And I would also thank the previous board before I arrived for setting the precedence for doing this. I'm personally seeing that this works. So thank you, John, Jamie, Pastor Jean. Thank you, everyone.
Good comments. Anything else from the board? We do want to just say thank you all for what you do. Thank you for being here. Also, just acknowledgement, not only Commissioner Hunt, her involvement, but Major McFadden, who's here today with Hope. We appreciate you, sir. And I've got to recognize Tyler Harris. I mean, he's, he's helping us with our opioid crises here in this county. We thank you, sir, for your faithfulness and what you do. So thank you for being here today. Pastor, we thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, Commissioners, is the consent agenda you have before you under the consent agenda, the minutes of the November 4th regular session, the minutes of the October 29th reconvene session, and the minutes of the October 31st reconvene session. This is all in the year 2024. Item B is the tax releases and refunds. And also, under C is Health, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Nurse Practitioner Residency Program Budget Amendment. Are there any items you desire to pull from the consent agenda?
Just move.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as is. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Jack, I know we have some from the media here and others that may receive copies of the statement that was entered into the minutes. I failed to give that to you. If y'all want to take it and have it for disposal, there may be some that would like it and might not need to stay the whole time. So if you will, any citizen that would like to have a copy of it, I think there are a number of copies and we can make more if needed. All right, departmental matters. Item four, under Health, we have Ms. Scott Harrelson, our Health Director here this morning. And also, we have Ms. Slagle with us, our Environmental Health Supervisor. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning. Thank you for.
And John Stuckey, the famous John Stuckey.
I forgive Mr. Stuckey. Yes. My portion of the agenda this morning is basically some new fees to establish that we can get reimbursed by Medicaid. These have already been approved by the Board of Health at our last meeting. And the first three are RSV, which is basically a respiratory virus vaccine for folks of different ages, adults, children, and also expecting mothers. So, and these vaccines are quite expensive. And our rationale is to basically find out what Medicaid will reimburse us for and then set a price for that at, round up to the next dollar. So the first RSV vaccine had a proposed rate of $536. Medicaid reimbursement was $535.34. The second RSV vaccine, also $536, same Medicaid reimbursement rate. And then the third RSV vaccine, the reimbursement rate was $303.85. So we're proposing a rate of $304. Yes, ma'am, per dose, very expensive. And that's it for the RSV. The next is a lab test to basically get creatinine levels in urine samples. We looked at trying to establish this in our laboratory, but the expense of the equipment and the maintenance, it did not work out financially. So what we're going to do is outsource this to LabCorp. Our contractor rate for LabCorp is $10.80. But Medicaid reimbursement on this is in two parts. You bill a code for $8, you bill a code for $7, so a total of 15 would come back to us and we would be contracting that out to LabCorp for $10.80. And the final is COVID-19 testing. We used to get these kits for free, the antigen detection kits, but we know what we're due. So they are Medicaid reimbursable now. Medicaid reimbursement rate was $41.38, so our proposed rate is $42 for the fee. And, and that's it. That's all the fees.
For entertaining the motion, is there any questions on the new fees? I hear none. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I made the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we approve the new and existing fee modifications that's been presented by Mr. Harrelson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you very much. And next up is Mr. Stuckey and Mrs. Slagle with the new environmental health program.
Hey, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And so we're here today to request the opportunity to apply for grant funding. The FDA grant funding would fully fund a new position for three years. And that position is the Retail Program Standards Coordinator. And I'm going to let Margarita give a presentation.
Morning, how are you? I do have a parking, so I'll wait for them.
Let's go.
Commissioner, we have Mr. Harrelson, Mr. Stuckey here. A couple of weeks ago, we had a really great bit in the animal shelter, which was an adoption in over a week. And I believe Scott, and I'm going to quote myself on the bottom of the lot here, I believe it was about 62 animals were adopted over that week period, but not in cats, which was a huge endeavor because obviously getting those out is a little money to count, you say. But they really do a great job over there looking at new events and things that, I guess, spark the interest in adoption. So hopefully that will continue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
John.
Like John said, we're asking for permission to apply for grant funding to support a position for the next three years. So I'll kind of go over the entire grant funding that we're requesting. Next slide. Next slide. So the grant program details, one of the central features of both the health enterprise and work of public health regulatory programs is retail food safety. Regulatory programs often face a significant barrier to committing time and resources to build capacity and reinforcing the retail food programs. To overcome this barrier, the National Environmental Health Association and the U.S. Food and Drug Administration have partnered to offer financial support to advance conformance with the voluntary national retail regulatory program standards. Craven County has received a total of $59,263 between 2022 and 2024 previously. Next slide. The goals of the grant program are to support strategies to reduce the currents of foodborne illness risk factors, uniformity in the national integrated food safety system, leverage state, local, tribal, and territorial governments, and retail protection agencies. Next slide. So the main focus of the grant is the base funding. This supports optional add-on grants between mentorship and travel and training. Next slide, please. The base grant, we are applying for track-through funding, which is a three-year grant. And we have to meet eligibility requirements, which is enrolled in the program standards, which we enrolled in 2008. We have a current self-assessment of all nine program standards and we have a completed comprehensive strategic improvement plan and we have met and verified at least three standards. The total for this is $60,000, which is $20,000 per year for the next three years. Next slide, please. The required outcomes of this grant is continuous improvement and meeting or maintaining standard nine. Only six of 980 enrolled jurisdictions across the nation currently meet all nine standards and only three of those have verified meeting all nine standards. And only one other county in North Carolina currently meet and verified all nine standards. Craven County is set to meet nine standards in 2025. Next, please. So the optional add-on grant is a mentorship opportunity, which we are mentors this year for five jurisdictions across the country. This is a one-year award. Next slide, please. So the mentorship add-on grant, like I. So the mentorship add-on grant, like I previously stated, we were mentors to five mentees across the nation in two thousand twenty four, and in two thousand twenty five, I would like the opportunity to mentor five more jurisdictions. We are working with the North Carolina Program Standards Network to determine mentee mentor relationships within North Carolina, and we're reaching out to surrounding counties to bring them back into the program standards or to get them into enroll in the program standards. We will complete site visits with our mentees, inviting them to Craven County or going to their states or jurisdictions and attend the end of year mentorship conference. This is a total of twenty four thousand dollars if we mentee five jurisdictions. Next slide, please. The other optional add-on grant is our training and travel budget, this is also a one-year award. Next slide, please. This supports state, local, tribal, and territorial employees to attend retail food safety trainings, workshops, and conferences. In two thousand twenty four, we sent two of our staff to attend the ACTO Conference and two of our staff to attend the NIHOT Conference. In two thousand twenty five, those are the options that I'll give my staff to attend different conferences throughout the year, most of them beginning June and July going into August. Next slide, please. And what we're here for is the capacity building add-on grant, this is where most of the funding that I'm requesting comes from, and this is a three-year grant. So the capacity building add-on grant is highly competitive, we're competing against all of the jurisdictions applying in track three and adding this capacity building. This is a three hundred thousand dollar add-on with a hundred thousand dollars per year. This will support personnel costs through the newly hired one full-time employee to increase conformance with regulatory program standards and sustainability plan to maintain retail program standard gains after staff turnover and in the future when funding is So the retail program standard coordinator position will be a three-year position, fully grant funded, next slide, please. This is going to assist Craven County in maintenance conformance. We currently meet standards one through eight, and we are working to complete standard nine. We have completed our risk factor study in all of our retail food establishments, and our NIHOT intern is working on analysis and intervention strategy report to submit in January two thousand twenty five for a verification audit. Since we meet all nine standards, or will meet all nine standards in two thousand twenty five, part of this position will be reaching out to surrounding counties and providing support to them to increase their conformance in the network, and hopefully working with the North Carolina network in across the state. Next slide, please. The retail program standards coordinator position will work in those intervention strategies that we're working in standard nine. We will develop a forum, and that will kind of be an educational, we could leave space at the convention center throughout the year where the staff, my staff would come in, we'd have stations set up, we would invite the four hundred permitted establishments across the county, between management and staff to come in where we can work in calibration of thermometers, hand washing, any gaps that we've identified in our risk factor study, we would try to address those at the forum throughout the year. And I would also like to create a learning management system utilizing Power Apps, Power Automate with a SharePoint front-end interface for my staff training. Next slide, please. And this is just the graph showing the conformance of all the standards, and the red is showing where we're currently working on to meet the standards. Next slide, please. So the capacity building add-on grant is a three hundred thousand dollar grant with a hundred thousand dollars released per year. The proposed position would start in July of two thousand twenty five and work through December of two thousand twenty eight. This is a hundred and twenty six thousand six hundred and forty eight dollars with benefits. This leaves room for COLA increases if there are any given out. This also would pay for the REHS exam, the registration fees, the essay interview, and any other costs associated with that. It would provide all technology needed for this position and provide the opportunity for them to attend the self-assessment verification workshop. Next slide, please. In total, this number is a little off because as I was filling out the grant, I had to add on thirty thousand dollars for standard nine. So the development-based grant is sixty thousand dollars with twenty thousand dollars per year. The mentorship add-on grant is twenty four thousand dollars. Travel training grant is seven thousand five hundred dollars, and the capacity building add-on grant is three hundred thousand dollars. So this totals three hundred and ninety one thousand five hundred dollars that I would like to apply for for the next three years.
Okay, Commissioner's questions, Ms. Legel. Question. Okay, Commissioner Martin, we'll go to Commissioner Howard.
Yeah, you're asking us to put a lot of money out as a county, and I was, we put restrictions on this that you have to come back each year and show us the strides that have been made so that we can fund it more or fund it not at all.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Howard.
With this retail program standard coordinator, would they be, how often would they be on the ground, like inspecting restaurants and stuff like that, would they be part of that program or coordinate that?
To be authorized, they will have to be trained, we will send them through the state training, authorization, standardization. At that point, they will do those inspections, they will work in our education program, so any permanent establishment that's category four, they will be going in and doing the educational visits. I can't write that they will do inspections, but if they have time, we have the opportunity because they will be authorized, they can.
So right now, we're only approving, just for you to apply for the grant, we're not approving any position. Second part of that, I know that one in six Americans are impacted by foodborne illnesses. Three thousand or so die per year, under twenty eight thousand are hospitalized every year, over forty eight million people are impacted. And I think that three thousand deaths a year is probably like a tenth of like actual, because you know, those are the ones that get reported. I think it's probably a lot more than that, so that's a few federal programs that I like. But anything that gets people on the ground, because that would be my, what I would see on the ground, inspecting places, making sure food is safe, that's one of our primary responsibilities, is that people go to a restaurant, they eat something, they know they're eating something that's safe, they're not going to be hospitalized or sick or end up in, you know, in the morgue even, so I do appreciate it, but right now, I'm for it only in the sense that I know we're approving you guys' application process and.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Howard, Commissioner Mitchell.
I have a question, if I understand this correctly, a lot of the training is going to happen by attending conferences, which is an expensive way to get training. Why is that training not available through North Carolina existing programs?
There are, we have to meet fifteen training hours per year just under the REHS certification. These are additional trainings. If we wouldn't have received grant funding, we wouldn't go to the trainings. We just apply for it for the opportunity to go.
And I'm all for applying for it, but I guess my question is, if the monies will pay conference and travel, couldn't the monies pay more training hours in Raleigh instead of an airplane ticket? But my concern is that the cost of attending conferences is a lot, that we might get more bang for the buck under existing government programs.
Our budget that we have in the county line pays for us to go to Raleigh and throughout North Carolina, it's just the network opportunities across the nation that this grant provides for us.
Okay, and the match from the county would be?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, so, okay.
Before, if you don't mind, Commissioner Hunt, then we'll come back, Vice Chair Booth, Commissioner Hunt.
I have a couple of questions, but it pertains, I know the end result of all of this is better, safer food and better health for Craven County citizens, but when it comes to small businesses, does meeting standard nine help our small businesses with their insurance rate, maybe?
I'm not sure about insurance rates, it just brings them to an even playing field with the corporate. We try to bring them up and give them as much support as we can because we do see that gap that the corporates have everything set, they have standard operating procedures and all that, where the mom and pop shops don't necessarily have that, so we like to bring them up and provide that material to them.
And also for our small businesses, by meeting the standard nine, does that help them acquire any state or federal monies to help them grow their business?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair Booth.
Margarita, thanks for coming. I am confident that everybody that opens a restaurant wants, I shouldn't say, most everybody wants to provide safe and, in a safe environment. The fact that you're going to be checking on them periodically just enhances that and encourages them to do that. I just thank you for your organization and the hundreds and hundreds of visits that you make every year, not just to restaurants, but Mum Fest and all the, all the food trucks, how many food trucks do we have now?
Thirty five, I believe.
Thirty five food trucks running around our county. So thank you for all that. My only concern about this, Mr. County Manager, is programs that get grants have a habit of hanging around after the grant is gone. And I just want to say to you, John, and to, where'd he go? Oh, Scott, and to Margarita, I'm in support of this, I'm in support of when we can get money from a grant, if we don't get it, somebody else will. But I want to make sure that at the end of the three years, that we terminate it, unless we can get a renewal, that we terminate it and don't add that on to our county expense.
That's why I ask that each year they give us a report.
Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, the request before the board today is to approval to apply for the three hundred thousand dollar grant to fund the retail program standards coordinator position, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? We're just applying for the grant, no need for roll call, so will, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Legel.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, Scott, appreciate it. All right, item five is water, Mr. Dale Booth, Water Superintendent, and also we're going to receive a presentation from Mr. Dwayne Allen, good county engineer. Good morning, Dale.
How y'all doing?
Good, sir.
Good.
So I'm in front of you today to report, first of all, that as of this morning, there are just over forty seven hundred new meters in the ground and transmitting, so that just about rounds out phases one and two of our meter installation project. That's covering James City and Bryches Creek area for the most part, what we call Nush River. What we have realized is that installing these meters is not an easy button. In other words, we can read these meters now remotely, but we have found a need now that we're going to have to maintain these meters, and we are seeing through training given to us by the census company who provides us software, that there's a lot of data that's going to be provided by these meters, and in order to get, I think, the full advantage of having these AMI, we need to approve a new position within the Water Department that would manage the maintenance of these meters, the inventory of these meters in the past, when we put a meter in the ground, it was as simple as our technician reading that meter number, giving that meter number to our clerks at the office, putting that meter in the ground, that all got entered, not so simple now, as we have radio transmitters, the radio transmitter number has to match the meter number, all of it has to be put in inventory and stored in the software program, so we're adding a lot more, it's a more complicated process than what it was to begin with. Fifteen thousand meters obviously is a lot, and I feel like having one person preside over all that rather than having several people will increase the accuracy of this program and ensure its operational effectiveness. In addition to that, the software now allows us to create reports, and the number of reports we can recreate is whatever you can put your mind to, we can create, so we can do consumption reports, we can do leak reports, we can do reports for people, if you used more than three thousand gallons in a three-day period, there's a, just an enumerated amount of reports that we can create. And so this position will be responsible for creating those reports, managing those reports, and using those reports to notify citizens of Craven County and any regulatory agencies that need consumption reports and all that. In addition to that, they will also serve as a backup within the office staff in the event that somebody's out, they'll add some redundancy there with the clerks that we have. We'll call this position the Meter Data Support Specialist, and I believe that staff believes that having this position will maximize our investment in AMI, in my infrastructure that we're putting into the ground.
Commissioner, you have any questions? Just send the budget. Okay, Vice Chair Booth, and then we'll go to Ms. Smith.
Dale.
Yes, sir.
How many people do we have before we installed these new devices that actually had to go and read the meter?
So, we have three individuals who read fifteen thousand meters a month, and talking to other municipalities, that is a, or utilities in general, that is an exorbitant amount, and we read on a monthly basis. A lot of people, when they have this kind of thing, they read on a bi-monthly or a quarterly basis, so we do it monthly.
So ultimately, once we get these devices in the ground everywhere, these three people won't be necessary?
They'll be repurposed. So what will happen is, what these meters are, and if any of you live in the Bryches Creek area or the Nush River area, you've noticed there's a small black puck on top of your meter now, and that puck talks to antennas on our water towers that have base station collectors. Well, just like any other computer equipment, they don't always communicate, and so people will run over these lawnmowers, just there'll be a whole bunch of things that can happen with these. So those three individuals will shift from being strictly meter readers now to being meter technicians, so they'll go out and they'll troubleshoot these. So this position here would monitor the overall software, they would see meters and need attention, and then they would delve out work orders for those three individuals to go out and say, okay, do we need to replace a transmitter here, did somebody park a car over top of this meter, is there dirt covered in this meter box, and things like that. So they won't be, there'll still be a need for them, they'll just be repurposed now.
So what we're saying then is, this new system is going to require a total of four people.
At minimum.
Indefinitely, at minimum, compared to the three that we have right now.
Correct, yes, sir, and I think what you can attribute that to is just the amount of salt, the amount of data that'll be collected now.
All right, Commissioner Smith.
My question was very similar to Danny's. My question was that since you would not be needing the meter readers you have at this time, couldn't one of those people be repurposed to take the position, this new position? So my, as Danny was thinking, I think, I was, I had a similar thought. It seems to me you would need less people, since this is more advanced rather than additional.
You would think that way, yes, ma'am, but in, you know, in talking to individuals who have installed this software, it's actually, it's an increase in convenience but also an increase in workload, in that there's a lot more to manage now than there is, so you still have to maintain these meters, and if you don't, you guys know, if you don't visit these meters on some kind of annual basis, they'll get covered up, the grass will grow, and eventually they'll have a leak and somebody will need to go out and turn the meter off, and if you let them just go, inevitably, you'll lose these meters. And so those three individuals will still be in the metering process, we just need an extra person to come in and kind of oversee this and do the data collection, because to task one of those three people with maintaining the meters and also doing this software, I think is too much to ask of one person.
Okay, can you answer something, Commissioner Howard?
This question, you say that there's fifteen thousand meters to read per month and three people are doing that?
Yes, sir.
That's about a hundred and sixty six meters a day per person, they're.
We asked that they read two hundred and fifty a day, yes, sir.
Wow.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, a couple of questions. The compensation report, three thousand gallons in three days, are you notifying the residents when this happens, and how are you notifying them?
So what that'll do is, there's already set up, I get a report on whatever basis, and for right now, the, what we consider to be an exorbitant consumption report comes to me daily, and then the leak report, which is a constant flow, we've got that set up for weekly from Monday, and yes, we take that report and that person would be tasked with calling these individuals and letting them know, hey, we think something's funny going on, are you doing anything differently with your consumption or whatnot? Now, it's not fully in place right now because we're still, these. Now, it's not fully in place right now because we're still, these meters are installed, but we're having to go in and integrate that with our current billing software, and our, so we're still kind of working that out, but I am kind of test driving that and making calls as I, as I see them come up.
This is just in the James City area.
The James City and Bryches Creek area, yes, ma'am.
Got another question. That puck, when it gets run over with a lawnmower, is Craven County charging the residents to replace that? And if so, how much?
We have not addressed that. I'm not exactly sure, but I'm waiting to see what that looks like. So the one advantage to having that puck is it is almost like a sacrificial anode. So the transmitter fits inside of your box and addresses to that puck, and that puck allows it open air, it can't read through those metal meter boxes. So when somebody runs over it and breaks it, that's designed to be a small, I think they're a little more than 20 bucks, around 20 bucks. The transmitter is very expensive, it's designed to break and transmitter fall in the box, not be damaged, and you come back, put a new puck in, pop transmitter in, and redo it. That's the way it's designed to be right now. But I have not had sufficient data to understand exactly what that cost would be.
Okay. I had a neighbor run over his with a lawnmower, caused him over $300 to replace. So I'm paranoid of this puck now. I like want to put a fence around it.
If you break the transmitter, yes, and we, and we make an attempt when we install the boxes to make sure that that stays flush with the yard. It's not always possible with different things and go out and adjust those as we see fit. But that puck, from what I understand and what I've seen in the few instances we've had already since they've been installed, that's designed to break and the transmitter falls, you don't have to replace that transmitter.
So you're just doing the puck itself. Outstanding. Very good.
Commissioner Howard?
I have just a quick question that's not really related, is that okay?
Yeah.
With the, I've gotten this question twice from last week, it's probably just the new people are following RFK, but fluoride in the water, is that...
We do, Craven County does not fluoridate their water.
I thought you had told me that when we did the tour with you, so I was just verifying that I remember.
Now, there is, inherently in groundwater, there is fluoride present, but we do not additionally fluoridate our water.
That's what I've, that's what I've been telling you, thank you.
Okay, any other questions concerning the approval of this request? All right, questions are of the board?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, it is to approve the request for a meter data support specialist position. You also in your agenda packets have the budget amendment in the amount of $35,763. Just for clarification, Craig, this does come out of the water fund, correct? So it will be supported by that. We didn't budget it this year, but, but it's going to come out of revenues from the budget, I mean, the water budget. Okay. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Here, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take item 5B from Mr. Aligood, and then we're going to take about a five-minute recess. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. This item is for NC DOT right-of-way acquisition for Project R-5777C along US-70. That is the US-70 widening project to bring it up to interstate standards from approximately Old Cherry Point Road to Carolina Pines. And with that section, there are five parcels that are being impacted that are water system parcels for the additional right-of-way easements required to construct the project. Here today also is Richie Smith, he's sitting in the back there, he is with the right-of-way group, he is, that's a consulting firm for NC DOT that appraises properties and acquires the right-of-way for the projects, so he can answer any detailed questions if there are about the actual appraisals and the valuations that were assigned.
Right. Next slide, please.
Actually, here's your five sites. There are four well sites and one pump station site. The total offer amount is $46,050. You see it broken down above, and we'll go through each parcel. Next slide, please. First is the Staley Pines, number two well site. So you can see here, the aerial view that shows the site in the top left there, the well sits back off the road, the impacts from the project are just some permanent utility easement across the front and some temporary construction easement. So they evaluate those impacts, and the recommendation on this particular one was $825 for the impacts. All right, go ahead. Next is well site, Staley Pines, number three. And with this site, there is temporary construction easement, there's some impacts to the fence and gates, and there's what they call damage to remainder of the total. For this site is $8,025. Part of what's happening at this site is the current access is from US-70, you see the dirt road coming in from the front, that will become a service road, and our access will be changed to a different side. So they're going to reconstruct the driveway entrance into the site, and the gate and fence will actually stay the same. So the total price or the offer for this is $8,025 for that parcel. Next site, three, is another well site, Flanners Beach, number four. And with this site, again, it's changing the access. If you look down at the top of the sheet, the access is off the service road, that's going to be changed because of the way the intersection changes, we want to be to the backside. So a portion of the fencing will have to be, or a new gate access will be provided on the backside of the fencing, and there's also temporary construction easement and some trees and some damage to the remainder for this site. The total impact for the offer is $9,975. All right. Site four is Flanners Beach, number three, another well site. There's your aerial. This has got a drainage utility easement, which is a little different than the rest. Drainage utility easement, it means that there will be some drainage work done within that area and utilities. Only these permanent easements, whether it's drainage utility or permanent utility, the county remains the underlying owner of the property, DOT just has the right to go in with the project and install utilities and drainage, and they also retain future rights to allow encroachment of additional utilities in that area. So the county would remain the underlying owner, but DOT is purchasing additional rights. And so with the utility easements, the permanent easements, they pay a much more percentage, a higher percentage of the value of the property than if it's just a temporary construction easement, where they're going in, doing some work, going away, and then you have full authority for that property, it's fully yours when they're done. All right, so on this one, $15,125, and again, that's primarily driven by this is a permanent drainage utility easement, okay? And the last site, site five, is a pump station at River Bluffs. In this case, they are actually purchasing some right-of-way at this site. So this is the only site they're purchasing right-of-way for, so that will be owned by NC DOT. At the end, we've got some fence we've got to relocate and a little gravel work that they've allotted in that offer, and the total amount here is $12,025. So accumulatively, again, the total offer amount is $46,050. Our recommendation is that we accept the offers as made and authorize the county manager to execute the necessary agreements.
All right, any questions for Mr. Aligood?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay, well, we got a motion, we'll have discussion. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, discussion, discussion. Commissioner Howard?
My district, I was going to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fine. Okay. All right, motion second, and then the motion is to approve the NC DOT offers for parcels and authorize the county manager to execute necessary agreements. Dwayne, I just thank you on behalf of Commissioners and citizens, thank you for working with DOT, we thank you for your assistance, sir, and I appreciate it. All right, here no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Propose, motion passed. Commissioners, if it's all right, we will take a five-minute recess and we'll come back.
I'm so sorry. Can you bring it back?
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay.
I'm seeing you too, sir.
You all ready?
Yes.
Come back to order. We're on item six. We have the information technology, Mr. Steve Bennett, IRT director. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board. Before you today is approval for a budget amendment and a project ordinance amendment. This will finish out the last phase of our Tyler ERP system. This project was initiated back in 2017, and it was designed to consolidate all of our systems, HR, finance, utility billing, planning into one software, one modern software package. And the cost increase for this project is due to changes as the project has grown, the biggest being we had to pause the planning and inspections project for about seven years due to Hurricane Florence. It paused it. And so we're asking for you today to fund the additional funds so we can put this project to bed and finish it out.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Bennett?
Well, this is going to help three districts, correct?
This is going to help all the everywhere we do inspections in Craven County.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
I'm stupid, I apologize. The additional cost, how much is that specifically?
I'm going to look to Craig because it's the funny math. I believe it's eighty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, that's all?
Yep.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Here none, you have two action requests before you to approve the budget amendment in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars, and the project ordinance amendment. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion. Second, any discussion on the motion. Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item seven, human resources, request for personnel resolution amendment, recruitment and retention bonus. Ms. Amber Parker? Good morning, Ms. Parker.
Good morning. I'm here to request an amendment to the recruitment and retention bonus policy the board adopted in 2021 to improve Craven County's ability to attract and retain skilled employees in hard-to-fill positions. The policy established employees hired in positions deemed difficult to fill will receive a recruitment bonus payment after completing their probationary period or six months of employment, and a retention bonus payment after completing one year of employment. The policy set rates for each of the two payments at seven hundred and fifty dollars for eligible full-time positions and two hundred and fifty dollars for eligible part-time positions, for a combined recruitment and retention bonus of fifteen hundred dollars for full-time positions and five hundred dollars for part-time. While recruitment and retention in some classifications has improved, there are some where we continue to see a high number of vacancies and turnover. An amendment to the recruitment and retention bonus policy is requested to establish a payment range for the two payments of up to fifteen hundred dollars for eligible full-time positions and up to five hundred dollars for eligible part-time positions. This amendment would allow the county manager to set the bonus rate within these limits based upon current recruitment and retention challenges. Under the recommended policy, eligible full-time positions would receive a total combined recruitment and retention bonus of up to three thousand dollars, while eligible part-time positions could receive a combined bonus up to one thousand dollars. A revised policy is included in your agenda packet for consideration.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Parker?
Yes, one question. You mentioned that there was one area that we have a lot. What area is that?
Our largest area is the detention officers. This request was something that the sheriff has asked us to look into.
Okay, additional, Vice Chairman Booker?
Amber, we did this in 2021, which is three years ago. Did we see some success with this type of policy where people came on and stayed long enough to get that bonus?
We did. So we've seen some improvements in our IT area, nursing positions, and also deputies. But when I went back and I looked at the numbers for the past two years, we largely have applied this bonus to the detention officer positions periodically, social workers, or some in the healthcare field, and a few IT positions. But in 23, 24, we issued nine recruitment bonuses, and only one of them actually was here long enough to get the retention bonus. And in 2024, we issued four recruitment bonuses, and we still have two people that are active to be eligible for that. So those numbers, if you look at them in general, would show that the dollar amount that's set is not really making an impact on an individual whether or not they're going to sign on to stay with or stay with us.
Thank you. Additional questions?
There's been a lot of competition in recruitment of deputies.
I would say our deputy positions are usually fairly full. There was a while where we had a lot of them that were the SRO positions, and so they have been having some success in getting those filled. But yes, there are other employers see this as a technique to use, and so as one area will create a retention bonus, I think recently we saw the Department of Corrections had a ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus, and we were thinking, how are we going to compete with that? It was a large bonus. But you have to look at everything, all benefits, salary as well. But there are other employers that are using this, so we're trying to remain competitive by increasing this to a range. And it wouldn't be automatic. It would be the departments would have to come to the county manager, ask for the bonus, and then we would take a look at the number of vacancies, how skilled the applicants are, and then he would set that range anywhere between the current amount of seven fifty and then one thousand five hundred dollars for full-time positions, whatever it seems that we need to make it be successful at the time.
Commissioner Howard?
I would just like to see some specifics on like, this position's been open for thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, then we'll apply it like an actual formula, not just... I just think it would be more effective, number one. And number two, I mean, I just don't understand where it's going to... I didn't know we had a retention recruitment problem, number one, except for I do know the jailers. I mean, the sheriff's talked to me about that several times. But outside of that, I didn't know there was a retention problem anywhere else.
Really not a recruitment and retention problem countywide, right? It's really two specific areas. One is detention officers, and Captain Smith, and Chief Cummins, and Major McFadden are all here. They can certainly answer this better than me. But over the last year, we floated between twelve and eighteen vacancies, quite consistent. And that's a real challenge when it comes to staffing. We're seeing, as Ms. Parker said, the state come in and offer a ten thousand dollar bonus. It's really hard for us to compete with. The other area that we see a constant need is part-time drivers with carts. It's a special skill set, a special person that wants to have that job. It is obviously an hourly wage, so some incentive to bring them in. We've learned that five hundred dollars, while great, we all appreciate anything, it wasn't enough to keep them on board the whole time versus jumping to driving for Uber or driving for some other organization. So I don't think there's an industry-wide issue. I think it's very specific. In those two particular arenas, we need the flexibility to be competitive. Is this what's going to drive somebody to take a job? Who knows? Three thousand, ten thousand, I mean, there's still a delicate balance there. But as Amber said, there's some benefit to working at the sheriff's office long-term. We think that it's a great environment. Captain Smith's done a great job in using everything he has, right? But we're just at the cusp of having to do something. Okay, additional questions, comments? All right, here none, the request is to approve the recommended personnel resolution amendment. What's the desire of the board?
Second.
We have a motion, and second, is any discussion on the motion? Here none. I would like a roll call on this, I think it'd probably be appropriate. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Amber, appreciate it. All right, next we have finance, Mr. Craig Warren, has two items.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Board. Have two items on the agenda for you this morning, both budget amendments. The first one is for the Craven-Pelmecca Regional Library System. At the July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two work session, commissioners approved one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars from SCIF grant funds appropriated to the county and the FY-22 state budget. Those funds were to be set aside and made available for the regional library technology needs. The board approved using these funds for both either operating expenses related to technology and technology-related capital upgrades. The library system has submitted an invoice requesting the release of these funds, and a budget amendment is needed in order to move forward with that. District report.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand for the Craven-Pelmecca Regional Library. Is any further discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Amber, appreciate it. All right, next we have finance, Mr. Craig Warren, has two items. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board. Have two items on the agenda for you this morning, both budget amendments. The first one is for the Craven-Pelmecca Regional Library System. At the July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two work session, commissioners approved one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars from SCIF grant funds appropriated to the county and the FY-22 state budget. Those funds were to be set aside and made available for the regional library technology needs. The board approved using these funds for both either operating expenses related to technology and technology-related capital upgrades. The library system has submitted an invoice requesting the release of these funds, and a budget amendment is needed in order to move forward with that. District report.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand for the Craven-Pelmecca Regional Library. Is any further discussion? Here none. I would like a roll call on this, I think it'd probably be appropriate. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Amber, appreciate it. All right, next we have finance, Mr. Craig Warren, has two items. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board. Have two items on the agenda for you this morning, both budget amendments. The first one is for the Craven-Pelmecca Regional Library System. At the July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two work session, commissioners approved one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars from SCIF grant funds appropriated to the county and the FY-22 state budget. Those funds were to be set aside and made available for the regional library technology needs. The board approved using these funds for both either operating expenses related to technology and technology-related capital upgrades. The library system has submitted an invoice requesting the release of these funds, and a budget amendment is needed in order to move forward with that. District report.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand for the Craven-Pelmecca Regional Library. Is any further discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, all right, and D?
Okay, second one is compensatory time balance payout budget amendment. Increased workloads, position vacancies, and assisting with Hurricane Helene response efforts in western Carolina have increased compensatory time, comp time balances across multiple departments, especially in the sheriff's office, jail, and social services. The comp time balances have risen to a level where management believes it's in its best interest to liquidate this liability, which could continue to grow over time and hinder department operations if employees were to take this time off. As of the October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four pay date, the total liability for comp time, including benefits, is three hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars. Management requests a budget amendment to pay this earned time by employees on the November twenty-sixth pay date.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Howard?
This is something that could be reimbursed, correct?
For the Hurricane Helene overtime, that will be, we'll be seeking reimbursement on those.
About how much of that is this?
We're still pulling those numbers together, don't have that exact number.
Okay, so, okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, approve the budget amendment in the amount of three hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I ask you something?
Yeah, yeah.
So what has to happen when you've been deployed in a situation like western North Carolina, particularly for our sheriff's office folks and health folks, is we've got to come back and fill out a paperwork that's required to be submitted by FEMA. So we haven't got all that paperwork because we still have folks kind of cycling through. When all that's done, we'll get a grand total and bring that to you just to make you aware, Craigle.
So yeah, if you recall, the board did approve fifty thousand dollars for those, so we kind of estimate it should be under that total.
How much of that would be coming back from FEMA?
Hopefully all of it. It's actually coming from the state. We have to submit it through the FEMA paperwork, and then the state would be the one to reimburse the county.
All right, any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the robe, please.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Craig, appreciate it. Item nine is completing the access to broadband supplemental fund. Assistant County Manager, Mr. Shane Dagan. And look at Shane today, I just want to recognize, not that he don't always look good, but today he really dressed up. I think today, if I've heard right, today is his first, you tell them what it is.
Shane is officially a permanent Craven County employee. He has completed a six-month probation.
Welcome aboard, buddy.
He's doing a great job. He's really doing a great job for us. Now I can do whatever I want. Okay, Board, thank you for letting me speak to you today. I'm speaking about the completing access to broadband funding from the state. So in August of 2024, the county was informed by the state that the CAB 2.0 project was going forward with a stopgap solutions program. Under this program, the state had no requirement for a county match, or rather, that requirement was being covered by a different pool of money. And so they figured out through their formula that Craven County's county match was five hundred thousand dollars, and that would be covered by their stopgap program. That would result in a total program expenditure of roughly one point four million. So service providers received this information, they reached out to us, we spoke with one of these providers, and we gave them areas of interest, which I'm going to show you in a minute, where we thought we really want to have broadband access. So they gave us their proposal, we said, well, these are five or so areas we really want access. They said, in order to do that, we would need to commit an extra three hundred thousand dollars above that five hundred thousand dollar match. That difference would have to be covered by the county. So that stopgap solutions program would not cover that additional three hundred thousand. So I'm here today to ask the board to authorize the county manager to work with the state up to three hundred thousand dollars. Now here's the catch. House Bill 10 of the General Assembly adopted in September was vetoed by the governor. House Bill 10 is scheduled for an override vote tomorrow. So the unfortunate timing of this is I had to appear today, but tomorrow they're going to, they're scheduled to override it. If they do, that would remove any county match requirement, and it would actually bump up the total project cost to anywhere between two point eight and three point five seven million dollars. So if I may, and I have Bryce here in case you have any mapping questions, if you want to go to the next slide. I want to show you the Brightspeed proposal. That's the vendor we spoke with, of course, any company can bid on this once it goes out, and then those are our additional county priorities, so. Go ahead to the... The map is low quality, and I don't have a better copy. This is what they gave us, and it's all proprietary. So this is really all we had to work with when we were looking at it, and I sat down with county manager and Bryce, and we looked at this map in as much detail as we could, and we tried to figure out where we could fill in the gaps. And so that, if you can kind of see it, the magenta or the purple there, that's, those are the areas we highlighted. So if we can go to that on the next slide.
Can I make one comment, Shane? I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but this chart looked drastically different in 2021. When you guys, previous board, and then this board now, began to look at where broadband wasn't at, this map wasn't like this. There has been some great achievement that has happened, and it started with the Great Grant, but then there's been other programs like ARDOF and general growth within the telecommunications industry. So this, this right here actually represents about a ninety-six, ninety-seven percent coverage area. Now Shane's going to tell you the rest of the story.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. So we are rapidly approaching a hundred percent. I don't know if the county will ever get to one hundred percent. We're going to get very close, we think, with these additional areas. So Robbie, if you can go next. I'm going, so Bear Hole Road in sort of the northern part of the county, we just selected this area as an area of great need. There were a lot of locations with Bryce's help, we were able to pull up the map on our end with our data and some of the state data on where we need, where there isn't access, and this was a hotspot where just people didn't have broadband coverage.
And I think this board has heard from residents of Bear Hole Road in this area.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Robbie. Uh, where we rode, go to the map. Again, in the far northern part of the county, another hotspot, feel free to stop me at any point, but...
And so they figured out through their formula that Craven County's county match was $500,000, and that would be covered by their stopgap program. That would result in a total program expenditure of roughly 1.4 million. So service providers received this information. They reached out to us. We spoke with one of these providers, and we gave them areas of interest, which I'm going to show you in a minute, where we thought we really want to have broadband access. So they gave us their proposal. We said, well, these are five or so areas we really want access. They said, in order to do that, we would need to commit an extra $300,000 above that $500,000 match. That difference would have to be covered by the county. So that stopgap solutions program would not cover that additional $300,000. So I'm here today to ask the Board to authorize the county manager to work with the state up to $300,000. Now, here's the catch. House Bill 10 of the General Assembly adopted in September was vetoed by the governor. House Bill 10 is scheduled for an override vote tomorrow. So the unfortunate timing of this is I had to appear today, but tomorrow they're going to, they're scheduled to override it. If they do, that would remove any county match requirement, and it would actually bump up the total project cost to anywhere between 2.8 and 3.57 million dollars. So if I may, and I have Bryce here in case you have any mapping questions, if you want to go to the next slide. I want to show you the Brightspeed proposal. That's the vendor we spoke with. Of course, any company can bid on this once it goes out, and then those are our additional county priorities, so. Go ahead to the. So the map is low quality, and I don't have a better copy. This is what they gave us, and it's all proprietary. So this is really all we had to work with when we were looking at it. And I sat down with county manager and Bryce. We looked at this map in as much detail as we could, and we tried to figure out where we could fill in the gaps. And so that, if you can kind of see it, the magenta or the purple there, that's, those are the areas we highlighted. So if we can go to that on the next slide.
Can I make one comment, Shane? I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but this chart looked drastically different in 2021. When you guys, the previous Board, and then this Board now, began to look at where broadband wasn't at, this map wasn't like this. There has been some great achievement that has happened. It started with the Great Grant, but then there's been other programs like ARDOF and general growth within the telecommunications industry. So this, this right here actually represents about a 96, 97% coverage area. Now Shane's going to tell you the rest of the story.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. So we are rapidly approaching 100%. I don't know if the county will ever get to 100%. We're going to get very close, we think, with these additional areas. So Robbie, if you go next. I'm going. So Bear Hole Road in sort of the northern part of the county, we just selected this area as an area of great need. There were a lot of locations with Bryce himself. We were able to pull up the map on our end with our data and some of the state data on where we need, where there isn't access, and this was a hotspot where just people didn't have broadband coverage.
And I think this Board has heard from residents of Bear Hole Road in this room.
Go ahead, Robbie. On Lulu Road, you go to the map. Again, in the far northern part of the county, another hotspot. Feel free to stop me at any point, but keep going. Just work through these. Joyner Drive. And in the Adams Creek area, this is, none of these houses were covered, none of this area. Keep going. Mile Road, Highway 43. Again, northern area of the county. This is, and you'll see if there's a trend in Adams Creek and in that northern, sort of northern central area, there's not a lot of coverage, so. Hotspot there. And then New Liberty Road. This is one that, one of those rare ones near Highway 70 that didn't have coverage and also relatively close to the industrial park, so we wanted to pull that out. And State Camp Road. Again, in that northern central area of the county, also Chris Road. That might be it, Robbie, but if you want to, might be one more here.
There's one more, yeah.
Waterway Drive. Again, by the Adams Creek area, far eastern portion. Houses there. Go ahead. Yeah, Wallace Road. Wallace Road bordering Trenton Road in the western part. All right, Robbie. Bryce, do you have anything to add to those? Do you have any questions for me or Bryce?
All right. Questions from the Board? I just want to say, I mean, this is, you know, where we've come from, I'm repeating what you said, but where we have come from since COVID, when we were dealing with, you know, children not being in school, I mean, out in the western part of the county, I mean, there were people going to the library and sitting outside doing their work, or they were going to churches. We were trying to get, you know, hotspots across the library system here. Commissioner Mitchell, we've invested through state grants in hotspots, but to be able to say 97, 98% of this county is going to be served by internet service is astounding, and it is huge. And I will tell you, this past week, I got a call from Brightspeed, finally. I've got the opportunity to hook up to high-speed internet first time, and you know what I've dealt with over the years. So I just thank you all for, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, Commissioner Smith?
I just would like to commend Commissioner Hunt for speaking so strongly for the hollow area. She's been on me for complete support, and I gave her my support, which doesn't mean a whole lot in the whole realm of things, but she's constantly been concerned, cheerful her, meet her concern about the hollow area that was not receiving service, and I think that speaks well of her.
Yes, yes. We commend all our Commissioners for your efforts. So Shane, I think the request is to authorize county manager to commit up to 300,000 to the state of North Carolina, and action two is to execute any necessary documents. This with the understanding we may not have to spend a dime.
That's correct, sir. This is really a position of protecting our interests. I mean, there's a likelihood it will, but we don't want to take that risk. We want to be prepared just in case something happens, to go ahead and be able to move forward with this project.
All right, what's desired?
The reason we're coming this week and didn't just come the next week is they're releasing this week the scopes of work to the companies to then propose, but we couldn't.
We couldn't wait any longer.
All right, what's desired of the Board? Some moves. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do you want to roll call on this, Jack?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
All right. If I could, get a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you again.
All right. Item 10, Commissioners' appointments. You have before you pending, current and upcoming. Do I have any, Commissioner has any nominations for any pending? If not, we will now move to current. We have a number of those. The first one is Coastal Regional Solid Waste Management Authority. In your agenda packet, you do have the application of Mr. Stephen Astor to fill the vacancy for the alternate position on Krasama Board.
I would appoint Mr.
Astor, okay. We have a nomination of Mr. Astor. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next would be the Craven County Health Board. Dr. Julie Sheffield seeks to fill the vacancy for Dr. Sheldon. This is the veterinarian seat. Vice Chair Booker?
Yes, I nominate Dr. Sheffield. I'm going to miss Dr. Sheldon. She's been very good.
She has. All right, we have the nomination of Dr. Sheffield. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next is the Craven-Pamlico Regional Library Board of Trustees. The first nominee we have is E.T. Mitchell. I would make that nomination. Do we have additional nominations from the floor? Here none?
Second.
All right, we are set by acclamation. Next would be Denise Smith, who seeks reappointment. Just for clarification, Ms. Smith does represent the Vanceburg area on this board.
I would appoint Ms. Smith.
Okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Smith. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next would be the Craven County Planning Board. Kurt, how you pronounce it? Stegeman?
Stegeman.
All right, thank you. He seeks reappointment. What's desired of the Board?
I'll appoint him.
Okay. Mr. Kurt is nominated. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next is the Craven County Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Carolyn Squires seeks reappointment. What's desired of the Board?
I make the nomination.
Okay, we have the nomination of Ms. Squires. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next would be the Fireman's Relief Fund Board. Justin Goodrich seeks to fill the vacant seat by Aaron McGlaughorn from Township Paint, West New Bern Two and Rims. Commissioner Mitchell and myself share this. What's your desire, Commissioner Mitchell?
I believe we should nominate him.
Okay, you have the nomination of Mr. Goodrich. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next would be the Fire Tax Commissioners Board. Same individual, Mr. Goodrich, who seeks to fill the vacant seat for West New Bern Two, Rims Fire Department. Commissioner Mitchell?
Nominated, please.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Goodrich. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. And then the last would be one Commissioner Mitchell has been working on is the River Bend Planning Board, E.T.J. You have Bernard Bush, who has an application.
Yes, absolutely nominate Mr. Bush.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Bush. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we're set by acclamation. All right, Commissioners, you see the upcoming appointments. Please take note of that. Anything else to bring under appointments today? All right, here none. We will now go to County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady?
Mr. Chairman, I have no report this morning.
Thank you, sir. County Manager, Mr. Vike?
Mr. Chairman, just two quick things. I would like to offer the Board, for any members that are interested, we are going to do a quick walkthrough of the library here in town after this meeting. It's not an official thing. It's just we're getting close, and if Commissioners want to go take a quick look at how it looks, we're still moving a bunch of stuff around, getting ready to open in early December. But there's that. Second, last week, I was able to attend a Krasama meeting in Pamlico County. With great sadness, we did pass a resolution honoring Mayor John Kirkland from River Bend and his service to the Krasama Board, which I didn't realize went all the way back, I believe, to 2001 Chairman Jones. So he had been a lifelong or a career-minded person there. John really appreciated that Board and the work that it did. He enjoyed the partnership between the three counties and all the municipalities, and he was greatly missed. We did, however, and not in Craven County, but there has been a long-term project with Krasama dealing with the Newport Transfer Station, which is where a lot of the solid waste goes to in Carteret County. There were some concerns coming out of Hurricane Florence. There was some money put forward to begin that capital project, to improve that site and the flow of traffic, so that we don't have the issues we saw with Hurricane Florence again. And lastly, Chairman Jason Jones was appointed as the Vice Chairman of Krasama at the meeting. So of course, I got appointed to be the interim chairman. And I tell you, I told a funny story that I've always sat here and I watched chairman over the years, and always thought I could do it till I was sitting on the other side, and then I was a deer in headlights for 30 minutes, saying, what in the world am I supposed to do? But anyway, that's my update, sir, and we'll head over immediately after this to the library.
Okay, any question for the county manager? All right, here none. Thank you, sir. All right, next would be Commissioners' report. We'll begin with Commissioner Howard. None. All right, we thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing, sir.
All right. Commissioner Mark?
I have one report. That would be on the TDA, which is showing a lot of improvements this last couple months. I don't have the figures with me, but I, and I think a lot of it had to do with the weather we had in the past, where some of the hotels weren't getting the numbers they needed. We do need more hotels in the county to help expedite better earnings, and hopefully that's going to happen.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mark.
Go ahead and say it.
Commissioner Hunt?
Well, I've whittled down my 12 items to just a couple. First, I'd like to thank the Commissioners, everyone on this Board for supporting broadband expansion all over Craven County. It means a lot to a lot of people because whether you're nine or 99, everyone deserves high-speed, reliable broadband service. So thank you. I also want to thank everyone that worked at the polls on voting sites in Craven County during this past election on Election Day. Most especially, I want to mention the poll workers in Havelock that worked the entire day and night without any relief breaks or even lunch. They never complained. They just gave it their best effort. And without a doubt, I'd like to thank all the Havelock residents who stood in line for hours to do their civic duty. Thank you much. But we do know that there were flaws in the system, and Commissioner Howard and I will do an after-action report to hopefully help things be more smoother during our next election season. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Commissioner Smith?
Nothing.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, I have one thing. This Board approved, has approved repeatedly funds for RU252. RU252 is a really good organization that supports our fight against substance abuse. And what they do is they provide up to a year's time with people that have been through rehab, and now they need a place to live and get their lives going, get their career going, et cetera. RU252 has, two years ago, brought in a speaker by the name of Tony Hoffman. And Tony Hoffman is a guy that really can relate to young people, and he speaks to the eighth graders. He'll speak to the eighth graders in our county. Unfortunately, the money it takes to bring him in is not supported by the opioid fund that we have. Technical reason, I guess, because there's no way to measure the results of what he does, they won't allow us to use opioid funds. So I'm recommending and making a motion that we approve $6,200 to bring Mr. Hoffman in, to speak to our eighth graders, and to remind them how important it is as they're getting to the age when drugs can be, can be a real problem.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Howard has left the room. I believe he's on the Board of this organization, so if we could have a motion second and vote to excuse him from participating in this matter.
Will you pull your motion?[1580.44]